All right. Good evening, everyone. We're just going to give ourselves just a couple of, just a minute or two to just get everyone settled. All right, I'm just doing a tech check to make sure we're good for the folks that are joining remotely. Wonderful. All right, well, thank you all so much for coming out tonight to discuss the important topic of the Minor Master Plan. We, as a council, had voted to delay the public hearing and to extend the comment period on the Minor Master Plan to allow for opportunities such as this, to provide a number of different avenues for residents to share their thoughts, allay their concerns, form and shape their thoughts in a way that can ultimately be shared as part of the public hearing process. I want to thank my colleagues on council for co-hosting this event. And again, I'm hoping that this will be a way for us, although we may differ in opinions, to do some information gathering, some fact-sharing, as well as learn from one another on some things that we should all consider as a community as we are working to develop responses and thoughts and shape our thoughts around the Minor Master Plan. So with that, I'm going to start really quickly with introductions. My name is Talisha Ceresia. I'm mayor of the city of Tacoma Park. And I am super excited to have the opportunity to meet with you all today. Just so you know, representatives from wards one, two, three, and six are here. But if you happen to live in the planned area, wards four and/or wards five, you are welcome. So don't feel like you're in the wrong place. And I see council member Hansak is in the audience as well. So with that, I will allow my colleagues to have a little time to welcome their constituents. All right, we're going to test that one more time. I'm waiting on the thumbs up. Excellent. Okay, and so with that, I'm going to start with council member. We're in a different order, so I'm used to looking for certain council members from the dais. So we'll start with council member Fulter from Ward one to say you're welcome.
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for coming. I'm looking forward to hearing what you all have to say. And I'm looking forward to continuing to learn more about the Minor Master Plan Amendment.
Council member DeBala?
Yeah, good evening. Thank you all for coming out. Many of you already know me, Cindy DeBala, Ward two, city council member and long-term resident on Allen Avenue in Tacoma Park. And after this is over, you'll surely have questions and views that you want to share. So if you live in Ward two, you know where to find me. Do continue the conversation with me. Thank you.
Council member Gibson?
Well, special welcome to Ward three residents. I see several of you. But I'm not known by everybody. Randy Gibson, top of Goody. And I'm really glad that you're here. Like many of you, I'm learning a lot more about zoning than I ever thought I would. I'm learning more about the Minor Master Plan. So we're in both, we're all in a learning process. And that will help me to inform my decision-making. In terms of decisions, I think it's worth noting that the council did make a resolution in May, which moved the Minor Master Plan forward slightly, or moved it forward into the public arena. We raised six concerns, which included adequate affordable housing, infrastructure costs, the environment, and other issues. I'm committed to addressing those and addressing those and other concerns as a requirement for passing the Minor Master Plan. This plan will affect our whole community for decades to come. It's important. Please contact me with your concerns and questions. I'm best reached by email. I'll be reaching out to you through my weekly email blasts. And I will share any developments I have. Thank you very much, Ward three particularly, for coming, for asking the questions, for being informed, and for caring about this important process.
Thank you, council member Gibson. Council member Small?
Thank you, Mayor. I am Jason Small. I am the representative from Ward six. I have a somewhat different perspective and approach with regard to this Minor Master Plan and/or this event from some of the other council people. That is because of my previous experience with both affordable housing and trying to put buildings in. And so I just want to say that I really and sincerely appreciate the members of Ward six that decided to come here today. And I have personally been very thankful that the tenor of the conversation on our list serves, and in particular among the residents, has been exceedingly professional, indicative of the professionals that work in this area that live in Ward six. So thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. And I do want to again acknowledge council member Hansak that is here today. And I do just want to echo the points that were raised earlier. This is not the only meeting that we've had since extending the deadline for the public comments. This will actually be our third, I think, official community meeting. If we count the Ward four, five meeting, the Long Branch meeting, this meeting. And I know that my colleagues are also hosting and have hosted a number of different sessions where you could sit down with them again to share any concerns or thoughts that you have. So I do just want to stress the importance of reaching out to us, reaching out to the council members. But more importantly, you'll learn more about how to share your thoughts with the county. One of the things that I do want to again stress is the importance of recognizing that people may have differences of opinion, but we can ensure that we are creating a safe place for expressing those thoughts and expressing those ideas. And I want to encourage everyone to keep that in mind as we move through tonight's meeting. And so with that, I would like to provide our wonderful staff that have been working tirelessly on this plan an opportunity to provide folks with a little, one, introduce themselves; but two, to start with sharing a little bit of information, background information that may be useful with facilitating the discussion this evening. So with that, I will turn things over to our acting director of Housing and Community Development, Ira Keller.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Pleasure to see everyone. Apologies, I can't be there in person this evening. Just a quick kind of agenda process. We're going to first of all show an abridged and slightly sped-up version of the most recent presentation of the public hearing draft to county council in May. And then we will go into a very brief PowerPoint presentation put together by city staff going over some of the key questions and answers that we've already heard throughout this summer's process. So I will jump right into it.
So now let's talk about the work that the team has completed to date. So once again, this is the background. You can see the planned area here. It's roughly 132 acres. As previously stated, that boundary was approved in 2021. This is the partnership that we are very excited about. And you can see all of the facilities that are located inside that boundary. So we have the Washington Adventist University. We have the former hospital. We have the Erie Center, which is that retail node at Flower and Erie Avenue. We also have a lot of multifamily residential along Maple and Lee Avenue. And then we have the municipal area, which is the Tacoma Park Community Center and Library, Piney Branch Elementary School, and the Public Works Buildings on Ritchie Avenue. So now let's talk about where we're going. That's the future of the planned area. The vision of the plan reflected the common themes that we heard throughout the engagement process. The stakeholders love the community. They want to see it protected. They were concerned about, they share concerns regarding resiliency, the need for new uses for old spaces, and the desire for improved connections. And so this was the vision statement that was ultimately created. And I'll read that for you. It's "The planned area will build on existing assets to be a resilient, reimagined, and reconnected community with new housing and other uses, greener and safer streets, and improved access to amenities." So it's a pretty straightforward vision statement. So this is a map of the existing land uses. As you can see, the current land uses in the area are primarily institutional uses, such as those found in the municipal area and on the Washington Adventist campus. There's also an abundance of multifamily located along Maple and Lee Avenues and a sizable amount of parkland. There was very little mixed-use development currently. This is what the plan is proposing. So it's a little different. The plan is proposing a more flexible land use pattern for the planned area. And what you see kind of shaded in that pink color, that's mixed, those are all the areas where mixed-use development is possible. It is important to note that we also had a few properties within the planned area that currently have more density than what is allowed by their current zoning. These properties were highlighted on this map as a part of our existing conditions analysis. This is a map of the existing zoning. The current zoning patterns typically reflect the existing uses, with the exception of the R60 zoning. In this planned area, the institutional uses and the parkland account for the majority of the R60 zone properties, and R60 would be your single-family zoning. However, there is a significant amount of multifamily zoning primarily along Maple, Lee, and Greenwood Avenues. There are also two overlay zones which predate our current mixed-use zoning tools. So the plan hopes to introduce the mixed-use development, and this would be accomplished by applying the mixed-use commercial family of zones. That's our CR zones. And so that would fulfill the plan's vision of a reimagined, resilient, and reconnected planned area. And so you can see here, this is a map that shows the proposed zoning. And I'll have additional detail on that as we get into the district section. So you'll actually be able to see a bigger breakout of that. So this section will focus on the new and improved uses for existing places and spaces. This is our reimagined section. And so this starts to talk about land use and zoning. "The goal for the land use and zoning recommendations is to create pedestrian-friendly areas containing a variety of amenities and neighborhood-serving uses. The plan recommends flexible, compatible zoning that can be more adaptive to market conditions while retaining the community character. Once again, this is an opportunity to remove obsolete zoning and to address any zoning inconsistencies." The plan also sees an opportunity for new public amenities, including a green promenade. This would connect the planned areas to safer sidewalks, new and enhanced parks and open spaces, and has the potential for additional bike lanes. You can also see in the image to the right the types of uses that could occur within the green promenade. "The plan will also make recommendations about new and improved public facilities, including colocation opportunities for recreation, schools, and safety and security offices." So now we're talking about reconnected. Okay, sorry. Wait, nope, sorry. "The planned area has lots of access to transit, but hilly topography and aging sidewalks can make Maple and Flower Avenue feel disconnected. The plan makes reconnecting the community a priority. And so the previously mentioned green promenade will build upon the city's Maple Avenue connectivity project with improvements to sidewalk, bike and pedestrian connections, and the potential for new private streets on the Adventist campus. All private streets should be designed to meet the standards established by the Complete Streets Design Guide." And so I think it's important to note that we are not recommending any new public streets. When we talk about streets here, we're really talking, new streets, we're talking about the private streets and the potential for those on the Washington Adventist properties. And so, hold on a second here. "The plan reconfirms the bikeway recommendations of the 2018 Bicycle Master Plan and offers updated recommendations for bikeways along roadways where necessary to align with the 2021 Complete Streets Design Guide. And while there are continuous sidewalks throughout most of the planned area, there are some streets where there are sidewalks on only one side of the street or existing sidewalks are narrow and/or obstructed. The plan proposes improved lighting, contiguous, unobstructed ADA-accessible sidewalks on both sides of all streets, and upgrading crosswalks at all intersections. This includes the Carroll Avenue SHA Alignment Project, which proposes improvements along, which proposes pedestrian improvements along Carroll Avenue near the Washington Adventist Campus, and also provides for new ADA-accessible sidewalks and other pedestrian infrastructure." So the plan focuses on ensuring safe use of roadways for all users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, transit users, and motorists, and does not, once again, recommend any new public roads. "There is an opportunity for private streets to improve connectivity on the Washington Adventist campus, and the design of any new private streets would need to be consistent with the Complete Streets Design Guide and must be open to the public." So reimagining our community also provides opportunities for preservation. I wanted to note that on May 10th, the Historic Preservation Commission held a work session and public hearing on the three sites listed on the slide and found that each meets the county's historic designation criteria. The Historic Preservation Commission recommended that the planning board list the sites in the locational atlas of, locational atlas and index of historic sites and recommended their designation in the master plan for historic preservation. Additionally, our plan recommends studying the Tacoma Park's historic African-American neighborhoods, promoting the area's cultural heritage, and seeking opportunities to retain and reuse historical design elements and resources. Additionally, the plan recommends the study of the Washington Adventist University for a historic district. "Climate resiliency is the capacity to anticipate, cope, and manage the impacts from climate change. Staff identify the most egregious climate threats such as stormwater management, extreme heat and storms, and develop recommendations to adapt and mitigate its unpredictability. Extreme heat is Montgomery County's number-one climate threat. Temperatures are escalating and are exacerbated by a combination of radiating heat and the absence of sufficient tree canopy cover." Excuse me. "The plan proposes a variety of methods to address these concerns, including increasing tree canopy and integrating sustainable design development and engineering practices. Carbon sequestration is the process of capturing and storing atmospheric carbon dioxide. It reduces the amount of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere and its associated climate impacts and vulnerabilities. Increasing forestries and other planted areas and reducing impervious cover are some of the best forms of carbon sequestration. And these are the methods that are, some of the methods that are recommended in the plan. Impervious surfaces prevents stormwater from infiltrating into the ground, causing runoff that transports debris, oils, and other pollutants into Sligo Creek. The plan seeks to reduce the impervious surface cover within the planned area, which is roughly 47%, with minimal associated stormwater treatments. The plan recommends supporting the city's stormwater management efforts and recommends a variety of methods to reduce stormwater runoff, potential, sorry, flooding rates, and impervious surface cover on existing and new development and to improve water quality to Sligo Creek. Improving energy efficiency, reducing energy demand, increasing onsite energy production, and decreasing embodied carbon emissions are essential to meeting the city and county's net-zero carbon emissions goals by 2035. And the plan recommends a variety of methods to meet those goals. Urban agriculture is an important tool in ensuring that all people have access to safe, sufficient, and nutritious food. The plan supports opportunities that can increase the capacity to produce and access sustainable, healthy foods." Sorry, moving a little fast here. "As a part of the engagement process, a canvassing effort was made in the multifamily residential units. These recommendations reflect the comments that we heard from the residents. They love living in the area and were afraid of being priced out. There was also a desire to see a variety of housing types and the need for code enforcement. The plan also encourages the introduction of MPDUs into new development as another tool to retain affordability. The planned area is home to numerous parks and open space, including the Sligo Creek Stream Valley Park, which is one of the largest parks within the planned area. The plan makes recommendations to improve its ecological health and performance, including the Rashir's Run Outfall. There are also opportunities for placemaking and natural and cultural resource interpretation. There will be additional parks. Recommendations are found in the district section. To better organize the plan, it was divided into three districts. Each has focused recommendations that relate to its unique conditions. These districts are the Municipal District, the Maple Avenue District, and the Flower Avenue District. The Municipal District is the civic heart of the city of Tacoma Park. It includes numerous municipal functions, many of which are located within the community center, and is also home to the Piney Branch Elementary School and the Tacoma Park Maryland Library. The plan recommends that the zoning in the municipal area be consistent with the zoning proposed for other properties along Maple Avenue. City and school properties now zoned only for single-family houses will be rezoned to a mixed-use zone with a maximum FAR of 2.5 and a maximum height of 150 feet. And this is to increase flexibility for future development of the properties, and that would be the properties five and six that are located on Oswego will be rezoned to R40, which is a single-family zone that allows for duplexes. Additionally, the following improvements should be made to the Tacoma Park, I'm sorry, the Tacoma Piney Branch Local Park. This includes additional lighting to improve safety and allow for extended usage of the park, along with opportunities for additional trail connections. There is also an opportunity for a unique gateway concept and improved connectivity as a part of the green promenade. The Maple Avenue District is the planned area's established residential center. It acts as the spine of the planned area and culminates at the Sligo Creek Stream Valley Park. Additionally, the bulk of the residents within the planned area live here and are served by a small node of neighborhood-serving retail. This district is characterized by attractive tree canopy and steep topography. The plan sees the opportunity for a reimagined Maple Avenue and provides flexibility in zoning. There's an opportunity to address, this is also an opportunity to address obsolete and inconsistent zoning. Efforts to retain affordability, sufficient parking, and minimize environmental impact should also be taken. The plan proposes that the existing multifamily zone properties be rezoned to a mixed-use zone with a maximum FAR of 2.5 and a height of 150 feet. And so that would be for the properties that are fronting onto Maple. And so you can see that in the slide, that would be all of the properties except for 10 and 12. Those properties have a maximum FAR of 1.5 with a 65-foot height. It is important to note that the current maximum building height in this district today is 140 feet. So we already have at least one or two really tall buildings on Maple Avenue. And so we're going to, I'm going to show you the slides because this is a very long district. So you're essentially seeing the rest of the zoning recommendations that go with that language.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I just have one little question or quibble. Could you specify what the stories' version of the heights are so that people would know? It's kind of what I thought, but I just wanted to say it.
10-story building? 150 converts to 10?
Each floor is about 10.
It's 10 people per floor, so 150 feet would be about 15 stories. Okay, the plan sees an opportunity for, I'm sorry, got to jump ahead. Okay. "In addition to implementing the green promenade mentioned earlier, the plan sees an opportunity to incorporate and expand upon the goal of the city's Maple Avenue Connectivity Project. This would make it safer and easier to get around the community. It also looks for opportunities to improve upon and enhance existing infrastructure." So one such improvement could be the use of existing parkland at the intersection of Maple Avenue and Sligo Creek Parkway. "The plan recommends studying the feasibility of an alternative use for this land. Additionally, the plan recommends studying the potential of a community garden at Opal A. Daniels Park." Other park improvements could include improvements to the ecological health and function of the Sligo Creek Stream Valley Park. That would include upgrading the park to address the ecological function and health, and then also implementing the Sligo Creek Gateway Concept. Including collaborating with the city of Tacoma Park on, I'm sorry. We're also looking at Rashir's Run, which would include collaborating with the city of Tacoma Park on improved stormwater management and the restoration of the area. And so you can see here, this is an image of Rashir's Run. And we would be looking at addressing the failing outfall infrastructure and also looking at repair to the unstable banks. Similar efforts are supported for Sligo Waterworks to restore the dam and incorporate a fish passage project. The Flower Avenue District represents the past and the potential of the planned area. And it is home to the Washington Adventist University and the former Washington Adventist Hospital, as well as the community hub of the Erie Center and a variety of housing types. "The owners of the Washington Adventist properties have met with planned stakeholders, including residents, regarding their goals for the campus. The plan recognizes their desire for flexible redevelopment tools and recommends that the current single-family zoning be replaced with a mixed-use zone that provides options and allows for the creation of some public amenities and facilities desired by residents and other stakeholders. A maximum FAR of CR 1.25 with heights ranging from 70 to a maximum of 120 feet is proposed for the campus, and this would include the hospital. A less intensive CRT mixed-use zone is recommended for those properties located along Greenwood Avenue. Those are the properties that are closest to the existing single-family community. This development should also take care to minimize its impacts to Sligo Creek." "The plan also supports the continuation of the Erie Center as a retail node and seeks to ensure its compatibility with adjacent residential uses. The current mix of residential and mixed-use zones should be rezoned to a mixed-use CRN zone. The majority will have a maximum FAR of CRN1 with a 45-foot height. Inconsistent and obsolete zoning will also need to be corrected as a part of this effort, and those would require a maximum height of 50 feet. So there are a few properties where we did have to have a maximum 50-foot height, and those are properties 30 and 33, as shown on the table." I'm sorry? Because they are currently, when we talked about non-conforming properties in the earlier slides, those are examples of properties that are non-conforming. And we had to give them a little more height because they're already that tall today.
Apologies. Could you also give the 50-foot height stories for everyone?
Washington Adventist University Campus.
This is pre-recorded.
"The plan supports a variety of methods to improve access, including new pedestrian infrastructure, such as the planned SHA Carroll Avenue Realignment Project, and also the implementation of a micro-mobility hub." The Green Promenade would culminate on the Washington Adventist property and would include improved connections to the Sligo Creek Stream Valley Park, um, and attractive gateways, and a connection to a recommended one-half acre green space, public green space on the campus. And there's also the dedication of the Sligo Creek Slope Easement to the Parks Department. And so if you look on the map, um, it's probably a little faint, but that would be that gold hashing that is adjacent to the former hospital site, but also is currently today exists as a part of the Sligo Creek Stream Valley Park. So that's the piece that we're talking about. I don't know if you can see my, my air, though. I just want to make sure everyone sees that, that. And the plan also supports design principles that seek to retain, renew, and reimagine the physical character of the Washington Adventist campus and other significant areas within the Flower Avenue District. Um, this includes retaining the central commons as an organizing feature for development on the campus. It also speaks to renewing the historic physical and visual connection to the Stream Valley Park. We're also looking at, even as a part of that S H A project that I spoke about, retaining that, those crenellated stone retaining walls and reusing and repurposing those, and then also looking for opportunities for the adaptive reuse of existing campus buildings. And so what's next?
Okay, thank you so much, everyone. I should have just mentioned briefly, uh, that was Melissa Williams from Montgomery County Planning who led that presentation in May. Uh, you're also joined while I prepare this PowerPoint slide at the dais by City of Tacoma Park Planning staff, Rosalind Grigsby, our Community Development Manager, as well as Alex Friedman, our planner. And I will now, uh-
And if I may just jump in a minute there, um, councilman- louder for me, sorry. Councilmember Small raised the question about how tall, how many stories is a fifty-foot or fifty-five-foot height? And the rule of thumb would be that that would be about five stories. It's not a perfect measure, but it, it, it's enough to help visualize.
All right, thanks so much, Ross. And, uh, hopefully you all can, Rosalind, can you just give me an indication that everyone can see the PowerPoint slide now?
Yes.
Wonderful. Okay. Uh, so in preparation for this meeting, city staff were asked to put together a brief presentation going over a few of the main factual questions we've heard during the public hearing draft review period. Uh, this presentation will touch on a few of those, but I also encourage everyone to visit the city's website, where we have been regularly posting educational materials in the form of blog posts. Uh, just very briefly, the Minor-Master Plan Amendment has been in development for over three years under partnership with City of Tacoma Park and Montgomery County Planning. Uh, you see a few of the key, uh, engagement moments on the screen to your left. Uh, and also, this plan is not a standalone document, uh, but ties into several longstanding and ongoing plans and priorities on both the city and regional level. Uh, this presentation will be available later for folks to, to dig into these, uh, in more depth. But a few of the city-relevant ones include our Housing Act Development Strategic Plan, our Sustainability Plan, uh, as well as several council resolutions uh, around climate change, around racial equity, and around regionalism in the Washington metropolitan area, and ongoing plans, including the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project. Uh, one of the main sets of questions we've heard have been about land use and housing. Uh, so how can folks think about land use within the plan? There are two main points to consider when thinking about land use and potential development within the plan. One is the potential uses of a property, and the other is the potential density of a property. Uh, zoning is the tool that is used to define allowable uses and development standards for a property. Uh, within Montgomery County Code, there are a variety of zoning categories and subcategories, such as residential, industrial, commercial residential, and even agricultural or educational. Uh, each of these zones comes with a variety of requirements and standards, not just, uh, about uses, but also, uh, about, uh, development itself. Uh, the planned area, uh, as you see to the left, uh, is currently primarily single and multifamily residential zones. Uh, and the public hearing draft, which you see an image of the proposed new zoning, uh, proposes mixed-use zonings for most of the planned area. Uh, within this image here, and the image that you can find in the public hearing draft as well, uh, the light purple areas, uh, are CRT zones. The dark purple is a CR zone. Uh, the middle purple is a, uh, CRN zone. Uh, and then the yellows and oranges are both, uh, residential zones. Uh, and we'll get into that a little bit more in a minute here. Uh, actually, I'll stay on it right now, now that I'm thinking about it. Uh, so just real briefly, uh, when we say CR zones, the CR, CRN, and CRT categories of zoning, these are, uh, commercial residential zones. These are mixed-use zones. So they allow for more flexible uses, uh, than a strictly residential zone. Uh, CR or CRT or CRN zone, um, would allow for a multitude of not just residential uses, but, um, commercial uses as well. Uh, the other thing that zoning defines is the allowable density on a property, and that density, uh, can be thought about through a combination of both, uh, what we call FAR, which is floor-area ratio, and height restrictions. Uh, so you see here an image, um, that talks about how floor-area ratio or FAR works. A floor-area ratio is the relationship between, uh, the allowable floor space of a proposed building and the total size of the piece of land it's being built upon. So when you see an FAR of one, for example, uh, that means that the allowable density on that property would be a one-to-one ratio with the, um, square footage of the actual land area of the property itself. So if the property is, uh, a hundred thousand square feet of land area, you'd be allowed to build a hundred thousand square feet of floor area in an FAR one zone or designation. Whereas in an FAR two designation, you'd be able to build double that. You'd be able to build two hundred thousand square feet of floor area in that hundred thousand square foot, uh, land area. Uh, this, uh, can be built in any number of ways. As you can see in the image here, a property owner can, or property owner can divide up, uh, that allowable floor area amongst multiple floors, uh, but the total floor area of the entire building can't exceed, uh, that FAR density. Uh, and the other thing that the building can't exceed is the height limit. Uh, as Ms. Williams mentioned in, uh, the previous recording, you can traditionally think of the height of a floor as being, uh, somewhere between ten to twelve feet traditionally. Um, it'll, uh, vary based on development, vary also based on, on use. Uh, ground floor commercial might be slightly larger than a residential floor, for example, but that ten-to-twelve-foot, uh, distinction is a pretty good rule of thumb when thinking about the amount of floors that can be allowed under, uh, various heights of zoning. So again, as you see on the image, uh, to the right here, um, let's take the example of an FAR one coverage. Uh, as you see down at the, the very bottom there, an FAR of one could mean that you could put, um, one floor of a building on the entire, uh, the entire allowable buildable area of the property. It could also mean that you could put two, uh, two stories of a building on fifty percent of the property, or you could put four stories on twenty-five percent of the property, or, uh, any breakdown there within. Again, as long as you don't exceed whatever the height restriction, uh, for that zoning might be. So as you look through the public hearing draft, um, you can, uh, we, we just wanted to take a second to walk through how you can understand, uh, some of the zoning designations because they're both, uh, can be long and can be a little confusing. Uh, so you'll see two different types of zoning primarily throughout, uh, the public hearing draft in the, uh, both existing uses and proposed new uses. You'll see, um, R zoning types, uh, such as, for example, here we outlined an R ten type. Uh, and you'll see the CRT, uh, or the CR family of zone types. Uh, the R zones are divided, uh, between several numbers, R ten through R ninety. Uh, the R indicates the land use type, in this case residential, uh, and the number after it, um, indicates the allowable uses and densities. So for example, an R ten is the highest density residential use allowed. It's intended for, uh, high-density, multi-unit, um, development. And, uh, if you look down here at the bottom, and also if you, uh, check out the city's website and some of the blogs we posted, you can dig into the code yourself, um, to learn a little bit more about what uses might be allowed in R ten versus an R thirty, for example. When you look at the CRT, uh, zoning designations, they're a bit longer, uh, but they do very clearly lay out that floor-area ratio, that FAR, as well as that height limit. So when you look at the CRT zone, for example, you see here, uh, again, quite long, a CRT one point five, C one point five, R one point five, H, uh, sixty-five zone. So what does that mean? Again, the CRT is the land use type. It, uh, lays out the allowable uses on the site. In this case, this is a mixed-use zone, uh, and again, the zoning, um, the zoning land use tables lay out what's permitted, what's conditional, what's not allowed within that zoning type. The one point five that you see is the total floor area ratio for the entire site. Uh, so again, uh, in this example, you could build a, uh, one-and-a-half-story building that covered the entire site, a three-story building that covered, uh, fifty percent of the site. Uh, you also then see C one point five and R one point five. These are the specific, uh, floor-area ratios for both the commercial uses and the residential uses. In this case, they align with the total floor-area ratio. And then lastly, you see H sixty-five, which is the height limit. So, um, even if you built a very skinny building, uh, that didn't exceed one point five, uh, in floor-area ratio, you still couldn't build in this particular zone, uh, above sixty-five feet, which again, uh, equates to, uh, about six stories, uh, in building. Okay, the next piece of, um, land use that we've, uh, heard a lot of questions about is about affordable housing. And what does the plan both say about affordable housing, and how does the plan impact affordability? Uh, so we've pulled out here just a few quotes from the public hearing draft, a few recommendations related to affordable housing. Uh, as you can see, these are mostly, if you're following along, on pages sixty-seven through sixty-nine uh, of the public hearing draft. I'd encourage you to take a look yourself as well. Since, uh, in the spirit of time, I'm not going to read through all of these, uh, but the plan does speak, or the public hearing draft, excuse me, does speak, um, to preserving affordable housing as well as reinvesting in existing, um, affordable buildings, uh, in the area. I also briefly just wanted to talk a little bit about the current housing stock within the Maple Avenue District. Uh, so this is for, um, all rental and condominium properties within the district itself. As you can see, along Maple Avenue, Lee and Sherman, within that Maple Avenue District of the planned area, uh, we have about twelve hundred units of housing. A, a little under five hundred of those are market rate rental units. Those are subject to the city's rent stabilization law. A little over five hundred fifty of those are what we call deed-restricted rental units. So these are, uh, units that provide affordable housing due to, uh, covenant, covenants that exist on the property. So the property has received either a federal or local subsidy uh, that requires the provision of affordable housing, uh, under a deed restriction, uh, or covenant. There are two hundred four condominium units, those of which that are rented by the owners are also subject to rent stabilization. And then we do have one limited equity tenant cooperative as well, uh, in the area. And then I briefly put here as well the average both compliance period expiration uh, and covenant expiration for those deed-restricted rental properties, um, within the planned area or units within the planned area, excuse me. Uh, the next set of questions we heard were, uh, around what's the impact of the Minor-Master Plan Amendment on other services? Uh, so one of the first set of questions we've heard has been, how are studies and additional planning being incorporated into the process? So I briefly just touch on a few of the various, uh, plans and studies, and, and where available here. I've quoted directly from, uh, Montgomery Planning. So first of all, traffic and transportation studies. Uh, these studies take place as part of a development review process, which we'll get into in a little bit here. Uh, but what that means, they happen on project-by-project basis. Each new project will be required to both conduct traffic studies as well as propose traffic mitigation efforts. It's a similar story with public infrastructure. These evaluations also happen during development review. And again, each new project would be responsible, uh, for ensuring that infrastructure is appropriately upgraded, uh, based on their proposed development. As far as climate impact studies, you see here an answer from Montgomery Planning, uh, wherein, uh, uh, master, minor master plan process, excuse me, after transmittal to the county council, the council will hold public hearings, and the climate assessment will be available no later than seven days prior to the county council's public hearings. Two additional plans that we've heard, uh, that we've, um, received questions on racial equity. Here again, you see an answer from Montgomery, uh, Planning. During staff work sessions following the public hearing in September, uh, the planning board will consider and discuss racial equity and social justice impacts. Uh, and finally, site plans and sketch plans, again, we will get into the development review process here momentarily. Uh, but one thing I did just want to point out is that the public hearing draft does propose that any development on the Washington Adventist campus, uh, be proposed as a single sketch plan, uh, which means that all of the impacts of any development on that campus would be considered, um, in a totality, including all of those impacts that, uh, we just previously discussed, such as, uh, open space, stormwater, traffic, uh, schools as well. Uh, speaking of schools, um, uh, we, we've also heard some questions about both schools and public benefits within the planning site. Um, real quickly, planning for adequate public school facilities is a joint effort between Montgomery Planning and MCPs's Division of Capital Planning. MCPs planners project school enrollment, uh, for the near future at the countywide individual school levels and develop strategies to meet capacity needs appropriately. They also coordinate, uh, basically capital improvement plans and publish educational facility master plans annually. Uh, and they were involved in, uh, the development of the public hearing draft as well. And I believe some of that information is in some of the appendices, uh, to the plan. Um, as far as public benefits go, private development of new buildings, uh, traditionally does include public amenities required by zoning ordinance as well as those specifically recommended by the plan. Those public amenities may include things such as open space, public facilities, and more, as well as improvements to sidewalks, bike lanes, and roadways along property frontage. Uh, these amenities improvements are reviewed and implemented again on a project-by-project basis during the development review process when the county reviews, uh, public benefits. And so moving on quickly here, how are the city and residents involved in the Minor-Master Plan and future development processes? So how will something get built? Uh, this is, I'm sure, very challenging, um, to read, uh, as a slide here, but this, uh, information in this graphic is also available, um, again, on the city website. If you search for the Minor-Master Plan, I believe this is our most recent blog post, walking through the development process. Uh, and what this slide just talks about is that, um, nearly all, uh, future development within the Minor-Master Plan area would have to go through the county's full development review process. Uh, that's for two reasons. The first reason is that all CRT-zoned properties that are but a residential zone are required to go through development review, uh, which would include nearly all of the Maple Avenue District as well as the Flower Avenue District. Uh, and the other reason is that the public hearing draft, as we just mentioned, recommends that the Washington Adventist campus be submitted for redevelopment as a comprehensive site plan for development review. Uh, what the development review process means is that, uh, projects don't just go straight to, um, permitting like they would, um, for a by-right, single-family development, for example, or single-home development, excuse me. Uh, but instead, uh, they go through the formal development review process where they are, um, not only reviewed by county agencies, uh, as well as by the city, but county council, or city council, excuse me, uh, has an opportunity to, uh, weigh in on development as well as pass a resolution to the planning board, uh, before, um, any projects are approved. So again, I will let you review this more at your leisure, um, on the website. Uh, and again, what say do we have in the plan itself? So we are currently in the public hearing draft period, the public comment period on the public hearing draft. Uh, that period has two key moments. The first one is the public hearing on September fourteenth before the, uh, Montgomery County Planning Board. And the other is the closure of the public comment period, uh, which will be September thirtieth. Uh, at the close of that period, based on, uh, testimony at the public hearing, as well as based on public comment received, the planning board will review comments, uh, and, uh, excuse me, and create work sessions, uh, to review the public hearing draft and potentially make changes to the Minor-Master Plan recommendations. These work sessions are held in open sessions during regularly scheduled planning board meetings. After those work sessions, an updated planning board draft plan will be presented, uh, as you see here, likely in the fall or winter. Uh, and then that plan, uh, will be presented again to the planning board to vote, to move it on to the county council, in, again, likely, uh, winter, early spring. So how can you participate in the process? I believe everyone should have gotten, um- I believe everyone should have gotten this handout in person. If not, go find someone in the front of the room and they should have a view. But this handout provides information on how you can both sign up to testify at the public hearing on the fourteenth as well as provide written comments. I'll just emphasize the comments you provide tonight are helpful and certainly helpful for your city council members. But the only way that your comments will actually impact the development of the work sessions and actually impact the public hearing draft directly are by submitting those comments as indicated on the handout and on this slide. In addition, as I said, we kind of just touched the surface on some of the educational topics around the plan itself. And I really, really encourage everyone to not just visit the Montgomery County Planning website around the minor master plan amendment, but also the city website where we've posted and will continue to post numerous blogs and kind of smaller format information about the plan and about some of the questions we've received to help everyone dig in to as best as possible and really understand the plan and understand the potential impacts of it. So I will pause there and turn it back over to Mayor Cersei to talk about the council resolution that was passed at the start of the public hearing draft period.
Great. Thank you so much, Acting Director Keller, for walking us through the history. I think one of the things that we've learned through this process is although for some of us, we've been doing, dealing with this for quite some time and it had the benefit of hearing from folks during our council meetings to kind of educate and answer our questions. Many of our residents haven't had that luxury. And so we wanted to make sure that with every meeting, we start with a little bit of level setting and to make sure that folks have some of the basics so that they're able to provide feedback. So the council passed a resolution to, in response to and approving for the release of the public hearing draft version of the plan. And the reason for that was to ensure that not only we had been, again, hearing about this for some time, but we wanted to make sure that we released a version that would allow for you all, for our residents, to be able to provide comments as well. However, one of the things that in our review of the draft plan, there were a number of questions that were still left unanswered for us and there were some concerns that we had as well. So what we wanted to do was make sure that the resolution, and I'm sorry, we have a black box that is covering up the words. That wasn't there and I was hoping, yes, thanks. And so I do want to just spend a couple of minutes to just kind of talk through generally some of the feedback that council has already provided in the resolution that we passed to allow for the posting of the draft, of the draft plan for public comment. One of the things that we wanted to make sure was very clear is that we need to obtain a wide range of housing types. One of the things that is really clear and has been clear in our housing and economic strategic plan and the different studies that the city staff have done over some time is that we have a missing middle. We have very expensive, single-family homes. And as Acting Director Keller has already walked through, some of the affordable housing that we have available in rental units, but there is very little in between. And so one of the things that we have as a council strive to make sure that we're doing is actively trying to work to close that gap. The other piece was also ensuring that we're still maintaining our affordable housing. We wanted to make sure that we weren't losing affordable housing, but also recognizing that we have some gaps in housing that is necessary. And so we wanted to call that out. Another big piece, we have a number of diverse small businesses that are within that corridor. Some of the small businesses that are along Maple Avenue, as well as some that are in the Erie Center. We wanted to make sure, especially as some of the zoning plans were proposing mixed-use development, that we were maintaining the diversity and the small nature of the businesses that are currently within the corridor. We wanted to make sure that that was highlighted. Another big piece was recognizing the need for additional public spaces. We know that we need things like expanded schools. Our schools are quite tight and we wanted to make sure that if there was development plans to increase the population of the city, that we also kept in mind the public amenities that our community would need, such as access to schools, parks and recreation avenues as well. Another big piece that we wanted to highlight was strengthening elements of connectivity, pedestrian and bicycle safety, as well as different environmental factors. We wanted to make sure that the plan would help to do things like promote our tree canopy growth, address issues of stormwater management, really be mindful of some of the things that we wanted to advance in terms of climate resilience and climate assessment, really trying to make sure that we're taking the necessary steps to alleviate things like very large parking lots or parking structures that we currently have. Another thing that we wanted to make sure that we were able to do is offer and continue to offer a range of opportunities for feedback throughout the planned development process. And that was really important. We didn't want it to be the case that we would put this out for public comment and then walk away. Or then the county would walk away. We wanted to make sure that there was clear avenues to engage the community along the way. There are things that are already happening, such as satellite access to the hearing that will be held in September. The county is also working to offer translation services for the hearing, but also for the documents that are available so that we can really try to engage our diverse community along the way. And then the last element was really around elaborating on the impact of increasing residential units and retail on service provision across the area and making sure that city services such as schools, infrastructure, things like utilities, that we have the necessary infrastructure in place to account for the increased density that's proposed. And if not, we would need recommendations around and clear recommendations around the increased capacity that's needed. So that's just a general overview of the resolution that the council passed. When we come back in session in September, our hope is to develop another resolution in response to the public, the public feedback that we're receiving thus far, but also in response to the closing of the public comment period. And our hopes is to be a little bit more specific in terms of what it is that we're looking for, especially in light of all of the engagement that we've had thus far. And that's why tonight is so important, along with the other meetings that we've had with residents, to really try to hone in and getting that feedback from you all around what is it that we want to see in the plan area. And so with that, if we can go to the next, I think we're heading to public comment now. All right. Next slide. Who's in charge of the slides?
Ira, will you advance the slide, please?
Thank you. All right, perfect. So one of the things that I do want to do, and I just want everyone to, let's be nice, but I do, it's seven fifty-six. How many brought sleeping bags? So what I really want to do is just kind of lay the foundation for how we're going to allow for you all to provide us with your comments. So if you all will just indulge me for a second, I just want to lay down the rules for engagement for tonight. So I do just want to stress again that tonight is an informational session. Our goal is to, again, share the information we have to date and to answer your questions. We recognize that people have opinions. And we want to stress again and again, if you have strong opinions, please submit those to the county. But what we really are hoping to do is to share the information and the factual information that we have. There will be questions that maybe we don't know the answer to just yet. We may need to follow up with some folks. But we do have staff here that are willing to answer questions that you may have based on the information that we have available. The comments on the public hearing draft, again, are welcome, but it will not be an official part of the minor master plan review process. Now, this is something I want to stress. We keep asking people to submit your official comments to the county so that they become a matter of public record. By them being a part of public record, that means that the county staff have to provide an answer. And so you telling us your concerns are great. It helps us to kind of develop informational materials for the community, helps us with formulating our thoughts as a council around what we want to propose. But if you would like to have a direct response to your comments, then you would need to submit those comments so that they become a matter of public record, so that the county staff can respond, but also so that the planning board will be officially aware of your comments. So I do want to encourage people to follow that process. And so again, if you want to ensure your comments are part of the public record that informs the planning board's work sessions, be sure to follow the public comment instructions. So I just want to reinforce that. All right, so again, to answer as many questions as possible, we're asking you all to limit your questions to one minute. Now, I know, I know. A lot of people are used to having three minutes during our council meetings. But I am encouraging people to please, let's stick to a one-minute question. And then that way we can provide answers to as many people as possible. We also will be taking questions from the chat online. So we have about fifty-seven people that are also watching virtually. So I do want to just be mindful that we probably have about a good total hundred people. And so I want to make sure that we are providing time for as many folks as possible. We also have, if we're unable to get to your question tonight, or if you just don't feel comfortable, there are index cards that will be passed around. Feel free to write your question down. We may not be able to answer it tonight, but we hope to use those questions to help inform future resources that we're making available on our website to provide the answers that way. So with that, I am going to ask for folks. Thank you so much, Councilmember Gibson. So, so because it is a very diverse group of folks, we are asking just so that members of council can know who's constituent is whose, for you to please say your name, as well as if you don't know your ward, that's okay, just give us your address. And then that way we can keep track of who's asking the questions and where you reside. So with that, are we asking people to come down? Yeah, to keep things in order so that it's pretty fair, I am just going to ask for folks who have questions to, in the room, to please line up to come to the mic. If you have any sort of physical disability or needs to sit down, please just raise your hand and I will keep track of where you are in the line so you don't have to stand up the whole time.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor Cersei. We're going to start with a question from online in the question and answer. It comes from Jan or Yan Rain. And it asks two questions. How many acres of green space will be sacrificed if the proposed brick and mortar projects are built? And what will the impact of having large buildings close to, what will be the impact of having large buildings close to Sligo Creek?
I'll take a first try at that. I don't know how many acres. I do know that there's a substantial impermeable surface now on the hospital, the former hospital property. There are not only the existing buildings, but large asphalt parking lots. So the county staff, sorry, the county planning staff will do, actually, I think for the county council, when they review it, they will do a climate assessment or an environmental assessment. And so part of the difficulty of our role in this is that there are many steps in the process. And as Acting Director Keller mentioned, we get different information at different stages. So we don't have the environmental assessments or the climate assessments at this point. The county council requires those by law for their actions. Did I answer both? The second one?
The second was what is the impact of having large buildings close to Sligo Creek? And how many acres of green space will be sacrificed if the proposed brick and mortar projects are built?
The other thing that I'll mention briefly is that the county has a requirement of buffer from the stream itself, from Sligo Creek itself. The existing impermeable surface on the hospital campus impacts, and thank you, infringes on that buffer. And so whatever happens next would actually happen farther from the creek than what is there today. But again, the specific work on that comes from the county staff.
Councilmember Small?
Thanks, Mayor. I just, I wanted to add to that, that, or to amplify what the planning staff said here and that because if you look at the area itself, there are a couple of green spaces that are yard or that are kept grass, but they're not necessarily that accessible. And then there is a huge parking lot. And in the parlance, that much space covered with concrete means that the runoff there is already abysmal. And so anytime you have a five-hundred-year flood on that space as it stands, you're going to have a problem. And we have several of those every two years at least. And so part of the concern that I know has been articulated by myself and the people in Ward Six, in addition to some of the other council members, is that the way that the plan is designed, there is no specific requirement for an increased amount of green space and/or specificity about the amount of permeable space that needs to be available to ensure that there is no or decreased runoff when those improvements are made.
Thank you.
If I may add, the public space discussion is important because of that element that I know the community has not felt welcome always on the Adventist property. And with redevelopment, there is a requirement for public space, which has to be public space. It has to be accessible to the community. And so that would be different than what many people have experienced today.
And I just will, I do want to be mindful. We get to talk a lot.
The only thing else I would say about that is that it needs to be recreation space and not just green.
Yeah, so, but again, we get to talk a lot. And the goal today is to hear from the residents. All right, so I just want to remind my colleagues. Give me one second, let me just finish this thought. I want to remind my colleagues that the goal of all of these sessions is to hear from the community. And so let's respect our residents that are here by providing them, they only have a minute, giving them the time to speak. All right, thank you.
Good evening, Paul Hubner, Ward Three. I live four tenths of a mile from the entry to the hospital and two blocks from Maple Avenue. My number one concern about the MMP is displacement and the absolute protection of all Section Eight and affordable housing in the Maple Avenue corridor and the surrounding area. Why am I concerned? Because I grew up in apartments until I went to college. We had to move eight times during my childhood, mostly just down the street in Brightwood. My questions for the council, I've worked on Maple Avenue at least three times in the buildings. I've met many people. I've volunteered for the village in every ward in this city and worked with those of us that need the most. My specific question is, what specific protections are in the plan to protect our neighbors who currently live in the city's rent-controlled housing? And will you, the council members, vote the minor master plan without specific written requirements that the homes of people on Maple Avenue and in Section Eight and affordable housing will be protected? Thank you. And thank you for doing this. I knew you folks were on vacation. God bless you.
No worries. So I'm going to actually turn that question over to Ira to answer.
Sure, thanks so much, Mayor. I'll be brief. I'll just point out, we put, I put a brief slide in there about the current housing stock on Maple Avenue. I believe we also either released either this evening or tomorrow a blog post about kind of the state of housing and affordable housing in, on Maple Avenue, as well as in the city. And I'll just briefly point out a few things. One, you know, we pointed out in that slide, there's kind of two types of housing you can think about when it comes to affordable rental housing. There is a deed-restricted affordable housing. This is affordable housing that's received some sort of subsidy. This is affordable housing that's received some sort of subsidy, is technically exempt from our rent stabilization law because they are required to provide affordable housing. And by affordable housing, we traditionally mean sub, around 60% AMI housing traditionally, 30 to 80 AMI housing. Those properties have restricted covenants on them that prevent them, during the covenant period, from being used for anything but affordable housing. As far as our market-rate housing, we have, as Mr. Hubener pointed out, our rent stabilization law. Our rent stabilization law, for those that are unfamiliar, just very briefly, allows a property owner to set a rent for the first five years that a unit comes online, that property owners predispose, set whatever rent they'd like, but it's obviously going to be based on whatever market conditions might exist. After those five years, that rent is then managed by our rent stabilization, which sets any rent increases to the annual CPIU inflation increase. So those are kind of the protections that currently exist. Again, we have a blog that goes into a little detail about this that someone just told me is live now, so take a look at that. And we can also provide some further information on both existing housing right now, as well as some of those protections in the future.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond, Paul. I feel as if I need more clarity on what protections we have. At this point, I don't feel that I have enough protection to support the plan, but I need to learn some more. So my, I'm open, but your point is well taken.
And as Acting Director Keller has noted, we are working diligently to put information out there to make sure that folks understand, and want to encourage everyone to take a look at the resources that are being posted. Next question.
Hi, Jackie Moore, Ward 2. Will the city council rewrite their resolution to insist that the minor-master plan amendment aligns with their climate goals and priorities, specifically with regard to priorities related to the reduction of greenhouse gases and the preservation of our tree canopy at its current level? The county's requirements are less than those of our city. Thanks.
Thank you.
I can speak to that. The city's policies take priority over the county's policies on those particular things, on storm waters, storm water management, trees, anything in the city right-of-way, and our rent stabilization laws. We are in charge of those.
Councilmember DeBala?
And in fact, just a couple of days ago, I wrote a piece on that and sent it to the mayor for the potential resolution, Jackie, saying exactly that, that the city policies need to be in the plan. Thank you. And I got pretty granular. It may get slashed because it's too long.
All right, next question.
Mayor, I have one thing from the previous question ago, and that is that at some point it would be helpful if you guys explained low-income housing tax credits with regard to the increased development of affordable housing and what that means in the process.
The next question comes from online. I'm actually going to read two because of one I answered quickly in the chat earlier, from Heather Mays Gleason. The question was, is Washington Adventist University closing? City staff have heard no plans for the university to close, and they're currently in an active campus planning process to modify and expand their campus. So that's all I can say to that right now. Then the next question is from Jay Keller. Are there plans to take down or rebuild any of the high-rises on Maple Avenue?
I'll take a first step at that. We are not aware of any plans whatsoever to take down any of the existing buildings on Maple Avenue. Several of them, especially the largest ones, are owned by nonprofit affordable housing providers whose mission is to provide affordable housing, and they are not expecting to take anything down. There has been a need, a longstanding need for greater investment and reinvestment in those buildings on Maple Avenue, and it is possible, in some cases, as we have seen in the Hill Manor buildings, where residents were relocated in other parts of buildings or other additional buildings while renovations were happening, and then returned to their original units. So there are ways to manage significant renovation when it's needed, but we have not been approached or heard of any expectation of raising and rebuilding any of those buildings.
Okay, next question.
Can I just jump in real briefly as well there, which is just two pieces, very quickly? One is, I believe it was included in the slide here around the housing stock. When it comes to the deed-restricted housing, again, those housing, that housing has covenants on it that requires the provision of those units staying in place and being affordable until the expiration of said covenant, and I believe I put in that slide kind of the average expiration year for some of those units. And the other piece I'll just add is, you know, even under existing zoning, this kind of gets a little confusing because as we talked about, you know, the R zones are not as neat and easy to understand as the CRT zones, but, you know, even under existing R-10 zones, for example, you know, property owners could still redevelop their property for the highest allowable density in an R-10 zone, which is, you know, 100 feet of height and a pretty extensive density. So certainly this changes some of the, you know, the highest allowable uses potentially, but some of those uses are allowed under current zoning as well, so just wanted to point that out.
Great, thank you. Next question.
Hi, my name is Carter Doherty. I live in Ward 1 on Crescent Place. I was really happy to hear the talk about Sligo and about affordable housing come up here. I've certainly valued my children growing up in a diverse neighborhood, and I think a lot of that's owing to the affordable housing, and I seldom pass more than 48 hours without being in Sligo Creek Park in some way. I have a couple of clarifying questions in that. One is on Sligo Creek Park. Am I to understand that there is no stormwater management on there right now, so any development could only make it better? That seemed to be what you're saying, but I wasn't 100% sure. The second question is regarding the affordable housing that's owned by the nonprofit developers. Is there any change that the minor-master plan amendment could make that would somehow change their legal status and somehow, you know, make it possible for them to tear down or build up or whatever? And my third question, I kind of forgot, so I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Two is really good, and you were out of time anyway. Who wants to, who wants to take those questions?
I think your question was about stormwater management on the Washington Adventist Hospital Campus adjacent to Sligo Creek, and my understanding is there is not any stormwater management there now. And so there is, all those impermeable surfaces, that water's going somewhere, and it's not going into any managed structure. As far as the affordable nonprofit developers.
You have to do that if you develop that, right?
It's required by state law, it's required by city law, and the requirement is that 100%, if you're doing new development on green space, 100% needs to be managed on-site. If you're doing new development on previously impervious spaces, my understanding is that something like 50% has to be managed on-site, so that would be a significant difference for the adjacent neighborhoods in the stream. Ira, did you want to take the second question?
I would love to, but I'm sorry, I didn't write it down. If someone could refresh me, I'd be happy to. Affordable housing and, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I believe it was about if the nonprofit affordable housing developers would be required to make changes according to the plan, is that right? If they would be required to do something different?
Sure, yeah, thank you for reminding me. Yeah, what I'll just say very briefly is, you know, the plan by and large talks about zoning and land use. It doesn't talk necessarily about required levels of affordability or unaffordability on any of those properties outside of the existing requirements under zoning, such as MPDUs or the city's rent stabilization law.
And the other element of that is that the plan itself doesn't require any property owner to make any changes. What it does is create a framework within which changes are allowed to happen if someone chooses to, but there is not any mandate.
I think the second piece to what Carter was asking was, it also doesn't allow them to get out of any obligation that they have to currently provide housing through, you know, whatever grants that they're receiving from the federal government. They're going to have to abide by that. They don't get out of it because of the minor-master plan amendment.
Correct.
Correct.
All right, next question.
So I, I don't know, I have a couple of questions, but one, the first one is, why is it so white in here? I'm not laughing, because I live on Maple Avenue in one of those high-rises, and I really don't understand why there hasn't been more of an effort made to do outreach to the tenants who are in those buildings. The tenants, the single-family home dwellers who live in Ward 5, who are going to be greatly impacted. The other thing is, and I will be writing you, the other thing is, I did hear in the presentation that racial equity and social justice impacts will be discussed during the September 14 staff work sessions, but I really hope that that was in the presentation. But I really hope that you're going to give more attention to that than just on September 14th. I hear you in asking people to send your concerns and comments and questions to the county, but we want you to write a resolution to the planning board that reflects our needs. And I want to make sure that that's what you're, you know, what you're doing. Thanks. I'm Denise Jones, Ward 5.
Yes, so I think I can take the first question around the audience and who's here. So we don't know the race of these 53 people that are on the Zoom, but I will say that we had a separate meeting. I know Councilmember Hanzak and her interns went door-to-door to get residents to come out, Ward 5 and Ward 4 residents to come out to the Ward 4, Ward 5 specific meeting. This meeting was geared and marketed to residents that are outside of the planned area, Wards 1, 2, 3, and 6. Again, don't know the racial composition of folks that are watching virtually, but I will say that there was targeted outreach that happened, and I know, I'm looking at Councilmember Hanzak, because I know that is her passion. She is continuing to reach out to residents in Wards, in Ward 5, to make sure that folks are aware of the plan and to make sure that their feedback is heard. We've also really worked to try to ensure that there are other opportunities, that there is translation services that will be made available during the public hearing that we're providing. Normally, those hearings happen in Rockville. We are having a satellite location for public hearing to happen here so that more residents would have the ability to participate, particularly those on Maple Avenue that can't get out to Rockville. So I hear you, and we are taking a concerted effort to make sure that we're doing the necessary outreach. So that's the first question. And then the second question around making sure that we're, you're hearing and inform, you have the ability to inform our resolution, and that's why we're having these types of meetings. One of the big things that we did try to highlight in the prior resolution is the desire for diversity and maintaining the diversity and character of our community, and so that is something that we're working on, which is also why we included in our resolution a specific ask for the county to continue to have diverse outreach efforts underway. As Director Keller noted, this is a very long process. This is the first step of many in terms of the planning process, and we explicitly asked in our resolution to make sure that the county is continuing its outreach efforts to ensure that all residents within the planned area are aware of what's happening and have the ability to weigh in. So thank you for that feedback, and definitely continue to keep those comments coming. And I don't know if there's any other, awesome, we'll go to the next question.
We'll do another question from online. This is from Sally Kabor. How large is the hospital area? I'm particularly interested in whether it is 12 acres, as that is the minimum size that the city is looking at. I understand that it took part in the school. And this is able to drive, it's at the same size as Sligo Creek.
The hospital is comprised of about a half a dozen parcels, total it's something close to 20 acres. Not all of that is buildable or developable. I will say that we met with the MCPS staff several times. We worked really hard. We said we wanted them to consider the possibility of a new elementary school on the hospital site, and we met on-site in 2019, and they very politely said they had funds in the budget to consider building or rebuilding, but they didn't have funds in the budget to consider land acquisition, and so they were not interested.
The county school system?
Montgomery County Public Schools.
I also think it's important, and one thing that has been stressed to us time and time again, is the CIP or Capital Improvement Plan process for MCPS is separate process from this. And so one of the things that we have stressed as a council is the importance of making sure that if there are zoning plans for increased people, and we don't quite know right now because this relates to uses, we don't know quite right now who those people will be, but if we believe that there is a strong possibility just through changing dynamics of our community and the possibility for additional people to, and families to move into the community, that we need more, we will need more school space. That is why we also highlighted schools as something that we definitely want to encourage additional discussion. We recognize the data that has already been analyzed, but we know that our school is busting at the seams and space is limited, and so it's really important for us to make sure that we're making that point heard. We also are definitely, and I'm looking at Councilmember Fulter, because I know we've talked about this, willing to send a letter to MCPS. I've had, I've noted that to some members of the school board, that this is an issue, and so they are aware of our concerns for how there's a need for increased school capacity, particularly as we are talking about increasing density in the community and the creation of housing.
And I'll just add as a final note, there is a blog post with more information about the process by which Montgomery County Public Schools and the county planning team came to the recommendations they did in the plan about Piney Branch Elementary School and educational capacity.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may add, just to add in, we, the plan, if fully implemented, would allow for 3,500 more units, which means more schoolchildren, so, which would mean, is it the potential?
Potentially, I mean, again, there, it all, one of the things I think is important is just because there is an increase in unit availability, use matters. So it could be the case that we could choose to build all senior housing. We could choose to do that, and that would mean that we probably wouldn't see a large increase in the number of families, or maybe we only build smaller college-age transitional housing, which would also mean that you wouldn't have enough bedrooms for large families. Or we could build units that would allow for families to come in, and it would be three bedrooms and more that would allow for families to come in, which would mean increase in school capacity. So I do think that it is, the use matters, and we don't know right now what the potential uses will be. We only know what the density or the capacity that is being proposed could be. All right, next question.
Hi, my name is Ashley Brucksher, and I live in Ward 3, and just a couple of houses from the bridge that goes over to the Washington Adventist campus. I'm excited about the stormwater possibilities, because as you all have mentioned, it's probably never happens, we can only go up from here because there's nothing on that space right now, so I'm excited about that. And also, I was wondering if y'all could talk a little bit about the increasing the number of affordable housing units through whatever is developed based on, I think it's MPU program, right? And then also funny, you should mention the 3,500 units, because my main question was, I know that's been a forecast of how much capacity could be added through this plan. Could you talk a little bit about when, if ever, the county or the city foresees those 3,500 units actually coming into existence versus just being possible? Thank you.
Yeah, take it to Ira, do you want to answer that one?
Sure, yeah, I'll talk about the county's MPDU process briefly, keep it in briefly and then talk for a long time like I always do, but, so MPDU stands for moderately, excuse me, moderately priced dwelling units. This is a requirement within the county zoning code that a minimum of 12.5% of units within new multi- within new multi-unit construction be devoted to affordable housing. The county defines that as, I believe it is for garden-style apartments sixty-five percent AMI and under and for high-rise properties seventy percent AMI and under. So a lot of percentages there, but the MPD law basically means twelve and a half percent of new construction units in, in buildings need to be set aside for affordable, affordable renters. That also, it's, it's an interesting question as to how that relates to the city's rent stabilization law. We have not kind of had a new development project that has triggered MPDUs in the city since MPDUs came into existence in the county. And currently, kind of average median rents within the city are actually below that seventy percent AMI threshold. So certainly, MPDUs will add added protection, but also our market is actually, for the most part, sub MPDU at the moment.
Next question.
When are the thirty-five hundred going to come online?
Ira, there was a second part of the question about when we would expect to see the thirty-five hundred units built?
Sure, so I can't speak to that. I mean, that would be individual property owners deciding that they saw the potential to redevelop their property and build to, to higher density due to new zoning. But that would be an individual property, property owner decision.
Yes, and I often say a lot, where I live in, in Ward Six, the Tacoma Langley crossroads area and the sector plan was from, what, 2012? Had lots of density that's in that plan, and I think the only thing we've built is a Taco Bell. So, so that's just, goes to, to show that although the, the zoning and the plans really just allow for an understanding of what is possible, you still need the developers or the, the commercial will. You still need the will of someone to bring money into this, into the, the game to actually do the development in order to see or to fully realize what may be in a plan.
It may, it may be worth pointing out the obvious, which is that the currently largely vacant property is most likely to be the first and the biggest of the development impacts. After that, it's anybody's guess.
All right, next question. Sorry, I'm losing track of which side we're on.
Jim Douglas, Maple Avenue, Ward One. A process question. My recollection is that the city has, I don't know what the right phrase is, greater authority in terms of planning decisions by virtue of the fact that it takes a supermajority of the planning board to overcome objections from the city on a planning and zoning matter. So question number one is, could you just sort of review what that process is? But my real question is, sort of what's the granularity? So if we object to, you know, this paragraph on page sixty-three, does it require the planning board supermajority to overcome our objection to paragraph three on page sixty-three? Or is it by section or some other part of a plan? Where, where does our, where does our objection get to trigger the supermajority issue?
So the city has an MOU with the county that gives the city council great weight. If the city council passes a resolution on planning and land use issues that affect the city, the planning board would require four out of five members instead of a typical majority, which would be three out of five members, to go a different direction. As far as the granularity, I think that the stage we're in now gives us a chance to signal to the planning board what the issues are that we want more conversation about, what the issues are that we're flagging that paragraph on page sixty-three. And I think the, the critical piece is that the planning board will set up work sessions to dig deeper into these things next. Out of the information that they hear at the September fourteenth meeting, out of all the public record that they receive through the end of September, they will distill what those topics are and take a deeper dive. And so it's a chance now to flag particular things. And then out of all of that, eventually, the planning board will turn to planning staff and say, go make changes, we want this and this and this and this. And they may put in that very granular thing that is requested by, by residents reaching out through the public record or by a city council resolution.
Can I ask a follow?
So, so just looking ahead, so we're at, we're at the, we're at the plant, we're at the draft now. There will be a final sometime, the winter, early next year, that will be, okay. And we will go through the same process, and we will look at the final and we will say what we like and what we don't like, mostly what we don't like. So at that point, will the planning board need to have that four-vote majority to overcome anything that you put in your resolution saying, we object to this, object to this, object to this?
That's my understanding. This will come back for a council vote before the planning board votes to approve and pass it forward to the county council.
So, so to be clear, the supermajority rule doesn't apply to public, to council comments during public comment?
It applies to a-
It applies to when there's the vote.
A council vote, not individual comments from council members or the community, but if the council passes a resolution, which is the council's way of communicating with the planning board, then the planning board needs to override the city resolution with a supermajority if they choose. In this case, I don't think they're interested in a fight with the city over a plan, a minor master plan amendment that's for the city. But we do have that, that weight. That doesn't mean the county, planning board has to do what the city council asks, but it means they have to have a really strong reason that convinces four of their five members.
Could, I thought, I just, the granularity question still is not clear to me. If, if I understand correctly, Roz, then the city council could make a resolution broadly saying that this has to happen for us to, to approve? Or narrowly, very granularly, say this small issue is, is what is holding us up from supporting the, the, the plan going forward? So we, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have the, the authority to go as narrow, as granular as possible or as broad as possible, and, and, and the county planning board responds to, to, to what, what we, what we put forward, our resolution?
I would add to what, what Randy has said here insofar as if there is a granular resolution from this body, is there a severability component to whatever the planning board is able to do? Insofar as they decide, well, they're just going to vote to take out six, eight, and nine, and then vote for the rest of it? Like, take out those things, supermajority, and then vote in bank for the rest of it? That is a, a potential component of this that could be at play, and I just don't know the procedure.
I can't answer that detail of the procedure. We can certainly confer with the county planning staff to determine that.
Okay, just checking the clock, it's eight thirty-seven. We're, we're getting there, but I do just want to remind folks that we also have index cards. All right, where you can write down your question, and we can definitely put together FAQs based on some of the questions that we've received. All right, let's go to the next question.
All right, this is a question from online. It's actually, I'm going to do two questions because I feel like they will have related answers, and they came in one right after the other. So question number one is from Jay Keller, who asks, who will develop the hospital space? Will the Adventists sell the land, or will they be the developers? And from an anonymous attendee, where could any commercial development slash retail occur on Maple? It doesn't seem like there's currently any room for new building without sacrificing current green space.
The, the Washington Adventist Hospital and Washington Adventist University have been working together on this, and both boards, the boards of each organization, have approved a sale of the Washington Adventist Hospital property to the Washington Adventist University. And the Washington Adventist University has developed some broad concept ideas of how they might develop it, which is some university purposes, like dormitories and classrooms, and some housing. That's predominantly what I've seen. They are, as I said, in very early stages in that. The question about commercial and retail on Maple is really about redevelopment. So as the zoning exists now, only a very small level of commercial can happen at all due to the, what's called an overlay zone. It's a zone that says in these particular areas, you can do something a little different than the underlying zoning, which is why we have a couple of small things, like in Park Ritchie, there's a barber shop and, and some of the, that's the only, Park Ritchie's the only building I know of that has any commercial or retail activity. The, the commercial buildings at the intersection of Sherman and Maple are actually zoned commercials, so that's, that's different. And, and I think there are probably areas of some of those properties that they could do an addition of some sort if they wanted to build into a parking lot or something like that. I don't have numbers and density in front of me to, to answer that definitively, but it seems like there's, there's probably some small change that could happen now. Any significant change, I think, would happen if, if it were to be redeveloped.
Next question.
Hi, I'm Catherine Tunis from Ward Two, and I have a few comments here quickly. One is that the, currently, the current zoning is laid out in the Tacoma Park Master Plan from 2000. That was not on the list of city resources, which I recommend that you connect to that clearly. And I also recommend that residents who are making comments look at what the current zoning is for those properties and compare it to what the proposed zoning is because, especially for the hospital site, that's a huge change in zoning from R sixty, which is single-family housing, to mega-density development. The other thing is that I have asked the council, a couple of council members, about forming a citizen committee to recommend various environmental impacts for the city council to consider in their resolution. I've gotten a response back that they don't think there's time for that. I'm going to disagree with that because I know that there are a number of residents experts in various environmental fields who have been looking at this and would be ready, I think. I think, I'm not speaking for them, but I think that they would be willing to come forward and work as a group to develop a set of recommendations for the city council. And along that same line, I have seen emails in the last couple of days with some preliminary climate impact comments from the county staff person. I haven't looked at them yet in detail, but if they seem appropriate, I'd be happy to forward them out to the community or, or the city to make available. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next question.
Hi, I'm Buddy Daniels, and I grew up in this city. I'm seventy-two years old. I grew up on Sherman Avenue at nineteen. I now live just outside the city by about a block. My family has been here since nineteen forty-six, and we fought. My mother, Opal Daniels, my sister Kaye Daniels Cohen, my father, Henry Daniels, fought for open space in this community, fought for many others for what this community is now. We have a lot to protect in this community at this point in time. And I really just want to say thank you to everyone who's here commenting online and in this audience. Thank you so much for what you're doing and caring, and thank you to the council. But be aware, there's a lot to protect with the incredible history of this, this town, this city, and what it represents. Also, when it comes to a new elementary school here, keep in mind, from nineteen ninety-two, it took us from nineteen ninety-two to nineteen ninety-eight, a thousand committee, a thousand-person committee to get new Blair built. So if we want a new school up at the hospital, that's a very strong possibility. But you got to organize, and you got to pressure the Board of Education. They ain't going to do it unless you pressure them, believe me. I thin out the hard way in the nineties, and I wasn't married or didn't have any kids, so.
Thank you very much. All right, next question.
We have another question from online. What was the impetus for the minor master plan amendment? Was it a response to state or county plans?
I'm going to take that, Roz.
The starting point really was the closure of the hospital. The two thousand, my, sorry, master plan, Tacoma Park Master Plan, did not in any way anticipate any such future as the hospital leaving. And so the underlying, the hospital existed as a special exception on, as Ms. Tunis mentioned, single-family zoning. And for all kinds of reasons, I think council members looked at that, staff looked at that, and said, that may not be what the city would, would really like to see there. And so the former city manager Suzanne Ledlow met with the former Montgomery Planning Director Gwen Wright and said, you know, how about this? Can we request this? And so that initiated it, and council approved that moving forward.
And, and I can speak from the perspective of a council member on council at that time. We were also on the heels of receiving our Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan, which also called out a lot of gaps in terms of our housing stock as well as the, the fact that our housing stock is aging, quality issues, as well as gaps in our current housing stock. And so that, in addition to the, the need to address the issue with the hospital and to ensure that there was a thought of not just, I know we've heard some questions of why not just focus on the Washington Adventist site, but the last plan was from 2000. We have this new, these, all of these different strategic planning documents that were encouraging us to do things like think about our housing stock, think about the quality of our housing, not just from the perspective of quality of life, but also environmental factors associated with our, our buildings. And so we, we thought it would be best to not just think of the Washington Adventist site as one point for rezoning, but to really think about more the, the space from our community center through the Washington Adventist site to ensure a continuous view of what zoning needs are along that, along that parcel. So it was a decision that was made out of necessity because of the hospital departure, but was very strategic in terms of the council's decision to expand the zone area, to really think through how we want the city to, to look and feel going forward. Next question.
Oh, thank you. You want to hold it? Okay, my name is Fred Schultz, I live in Ward Six. I have like five questions, and I'll be very quick. And you, you can consider some of them to be rhetorical. What is going to happen to the old hospital, and when? What is the involvement of Washington Adventist University in all of this planning? Because I haven't heard anything about that. How are we going to get control of the land if we wanted to, to implement any of this? Third, it seems to me Piney Branch School seems, the issue of that and, and the lack of adequate classroom space takes precedence over everything else. Until we get that, until we figure out the answer to that question, the rest of the planning is kind of academic. And finally, I've got twelve seconds. How are we going to motivate developers to come into this city when we have a reputation for not being very welcoming to developers? Thank you.
So briefly, I'll, I'll touch on, we have talked a little bit about the Washington Adventist Hospital campus, and the Washington Adventist University has been part of all of these discussions for the minor master plan from the beginning, as was the hospital early on, and as I just mentioned, are, are taking over that property. The question about how to get control of the land, I think a lot of the, if the plan is enacted, I think the changes that we'd, we'd see, a lot of them would be by private developers, not by the city or the county. The school is a conundrum. I think a lot of people agree that the issues, those should be paramount, and the Montgomery County Public Schools' calculations are baffling. And Ira, maybe I will leave to you the question of how to motivate-
And Ira, maybe I will leave to you the question of how to motivate developers. How's that for passing?
Sure, I'll, I'll just say briefly, I'll maybe speak more broadly than that, which is, you know, regardless of what side you fall on that particular question, you know, just one thing I want to point out is that the minor master plan is just one tool and one process that the city has when it comes to housing. We've talked about things like our rent stabilization ordinance, we've talked about things like deed-restricted housing. And so, what the plan does is it talks about land use and zoning, and it talks about recommendations around allowable uses around density. It certainly can do more than that, but, but there's other tools in the toolkit that council has, that the county has, that the state has, that also are important factors when it comes to what happens on specific sites and, and what happens in specific areas. So, I, I don't know if I answered that question, but I just wanted to kind of throw that out there for consideration as we all kind of look through the public hearing draft and, and think about what's important for us.
Ira, what is the propensity of people to use low-income housing tax credits to get things built in a place where you also have a rent-controlled situation? Is that a, is that a component factor in the difficulty, or is it just the nature of the, I don't know, the dialogue associated with trying to build here?
Sure. So, you know, low-income housing tax credits, which is a federal program administered by the state that awards funding for affordable housing, is one of the critical tools that jurisdictions have to incentivize the development of affordable housing. Low-income housing tax credits, we call them LIHTC, they are basically a, a source of financing for a project. In exchange for that financing, property is deed-restricted affordable housing. So it has a covenant on it that has a 15-year compliance period, traditionally around a 30-year, excuse me, a 30-year covenant period that requires the properties in LIHTC deals to maintain an average of 60% AMI of units and a 30 to 80 AMI breakdown traditionally. So, those are a source of funding. They are limited, they're allocated by the state, folks apply for that funding, but it's certainly a critical tool, both for building new affordable housing as well as for retaining affordable housing. When LIHTC periods expire, if a developer, if property is either sold to a new owner or is undergoing rehabilitation, that property can reapply for a new round of credits, which again, comes with a new extended compliance and covenant period.
I hate to be a pill about this particular issue, but I'm just curious about if you could follow up on the last part, because part of the thing here is if, if we can get affordable housing built with the normal tools or not. And so, as a component of, as we look at the future, it would be good if we could use LIHTC funding and keep the buildings that are rent-controlled, rent-controlled. So I'm just curious about that as a, I don't know, a policy possibility within this space.
Yeah. So I do, given that it is 8:52, and I, I want to just reinforce what I've said about members of council. We, we talk about this stuff all the time, and, and we have people in line, and I just want to make sure that we are able to, to let the folks that are in line have, have their say. I will just quickly say, you know, to the question about how do we motivate developers, I've said time and time again, development is not a dirty word. It's just really not. It is a way to diversify your tax base, it is a way to get community amenities that you desperately need. There, there are ways to address things like storm water management, provide housing to people. I think the key is community education. So I do just want to thank again everyone for coming out and wanting to learn about zoning and learn about these things, because it really is, I think that's half the battle to demystify and devilify development. I think that's really critically important. All right, next question.
All right, these, oh, sorry, I'm jumping the queue.
All right, who, who's next? Okay.
Sue Miller, Ward Three. Part of the problem with the plan is that it uses language like striving for, that we asked for this week on what is the stock of our housing on Maple and what are the protections that are in place for it. But looking at it very briefly just now, it wasn't particularly reassuring. There is nothing to stop the owner of a rent-stabilized building when there is economic pressure from upzoning and land values go up, from selling the building. And, and it's happened before in this city in recent years, and we are losing affordable housing as a result. So I guess I'm asking the city what more you can do in this upcoming resolution to make some balance between your desire for development. We all want to see housing on the Washington Adventist campus. We'd love to see a mix of affordable and middle missing. I'd love to see townhouses. But nobody really asked the people on Maple if they want all of their parking lots and green spaces turned into additional high-rises. That is not what the county outreach asked them. The county outreach asked them, you know, what, how do you love your neighborhood? What would you like to see on the campus at the hospital? It was never revealed that there was going to be extreme upzoning and that there was a threat of displacement. So we're counting on you guys to pivot on this and help us. Thank you.
I'd just like to remind everyone I don't have to pivot because I'm against it.
So, so Ira, if you want to take the first question?
Sure, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll just point out a few things. One, you know, I'd also encourage everyone to take a look at the 2019 Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan that the city released. That plan kind of breaks down our housing strategy into three big buckets: produce, preserve, and protect. And we have different strategies for addressing each of those buckets, but really what they're about are about, as has been discussed, you know, preserving affordable housing and protecting affordable housing and existing housing. And we do that not just through rent stabilization, but also through identifying funding sources to provide opportunities for existing building owners to invest in their properties, to improve both needed infrastructure improvements as well as sustainability and electrification improvements. And we also are very excited this year to expand our tenant right-to-purchase program, Tenant Opportunity Purchase Law, excuse me, which is an ordinance that the city has had in effect, and we now have some funding to also help support tenants as they explore that process and, and potentially work towards acquiring available buildings. So, so again, I'll just point out, you know, the minor master plan is one piece in our broader toolkit, but that toolkit is both about, you know, preserving housing as well as producing housing.
Great, thank you. Next question, if we can.
All right, this is a couple of questions from online. First of which is, how long is the covenant period, presumably for deed-restricted housing? Second is, has there been any polling of Tacoma Park residents to see which type of new businesses, if, see which type of new businesses, if any, people would like to see? For example, is there any interest in a grocery store more walkable for some Tacoma Park residents? And third, from, sorry, that was anonymous attendee Brett Mahan and Richard Masterson with Roanoke, Ward Five. Can we have more than seven days to review the county's environmental impact report? Like 30 days?
Would you like me to touch on the covenant, covenant one?
Yes, please.
Sure. So, as I mentioned, kind of a majority, almost all of our deed-restricted housing on Maple Avenue is through LIHTC. As I mentioned before, that, that traditionally comes with a approximately kind of 30-ish year covenant period, so that, the kind of expiration of that depends on obviously when the LIHTC funding was awarded, when that kicks in. Just quickly, kind of the average restricted covenant expiration for the current rental units, deed-restricted rental units on Maple Avenue is 2051 at the moment. So that is when those covenants would expire on average for, for the deed-restricted units.
And I think it might be helpful, because we are here, some questions around engagement. And so, if Roz would do, or like to take the question on engagement?
So it's a tricky question, of course, because seven days before the planning board isn't, isn't enough. I think the critical thing to remember here is that the planning board will hold work sessions. And so, if we feel like the environmental impact and environmental conditions is critical, then we can flag that for the county, for the county planning board. We can do that through individual comments to the planning board. They will tabulate and look at them and see what seems to get the most attention and needs, needs response. And council can do it by, in their resolution, including, we want work sessions on particular topics. And the, the frustration that the community has, I think, makes sense. The planning, the, the schedule set by Montgomery Planning doesn't really accommodate municipalities particularly. I mean, they do these countywide, they do these for Silver Spring, large unincorporated areas, and so the insertion of how the city and the county work together on this has a couple of rough spots, and, and that kind of structure and timing, I think, is one of them. And the way we can respond is to ask the planning board to have a work session on it.
And I do just want to, the last question around, did we ask residents what they would like to see? And I know that there's been quite a few comments around the community engagement process, but I do know that the county did do a pretty comprehensive engagement process where they went door-to-door, they met with students at Washington Adventist. There's segments of the report that highlight some of the things that were found. So for example, one of the things that I recall is that the students at Washington Adventist said that there really weren't, weren't many places for them to go out here. Cheap eats, which are things that they would value, so they typically go to downtown Silver Spring, they don't stay around campus. And if you think about your college days, you know, I'm pretty sure you recall the cheap dollar slice pizza place that you would go to with, with your friends. There were results for residents that lived on, on Maple Avenue in the multifamily buildings, and they did highlight things like a grocery store, but also cheap access to things like a dollar store, some, some sort of lower-cost grocery, quick, be able to grab some things that you need for your family for dinner for the night. So, the, the draft plan, and we can go back and just identify perhaps some of the prior county presentations that the council received, where they walk through in greater detail some of the results from their community engagement activities. And I think that that might also be helpful for folks to get a better understanding, because again, this spanned a number of years in terms of the outreach, but it did happen during COVID. So it could just simply be the case that because it happened during COVID, people weren't aware of a lot of the door knocking that was happening.
I just want to point out, I'm holding the, the Maple Avenue part of the community survey because I was interested in looking at it more closely also, and someone mentioned grocery stores. So, just scanning this quickly, the things that are highest are, are healthcare. Yeah, I know. Maintenance, maintenance, maintenance issues with their building, which speaks to the age and condition of the buildings that are there now. And the next one down, grocery store. So, for whatever that's worth, that's the answer to that question.
Yeah. All right, next question.
Hi, good evening. Giuseppe Chimino, 34-year resident of Ward Four. I wanted to follow up on some of the previous comments about that spectacular resource, which is Sligo Creek Parkway, excuse me, Park, and asked specifically on the map items number 18 and 19, which represent two current buildings. One, I believe, is R10 and is about 11 stories, the other is R30 and about three stories. If I am understanding the new zoning correctly, these will both be allowed to be potentially redeveloped into 150 feet tall, one of which is adjacent to Sligo Creek Parkway. So I wanted to ask the council, what will you do to make sure that the plan protects some type of a transition or buffer to Sligo Creek Park rather than having 150-foot-tall building adjacent to it? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I already got it, yeah. This is, I've, I've committed this thing to memory at this point. If you want to answer that question again, just about Sligo?
So the, there are a number of buildings on Maple Avenue which are now considered non-conforming because, because they don't actually meet the requirements of the underlying zoning. And so, one of those is one you flagged, it's Maple View Apartments. And it is 12, I believe it's 12 stories now, so it's probably more than 120 feet. It is, the proposed zoning would give it a height of 150. The other property you mentioned, I think, is particularly curious, complicated, because it's the Hilltop Condos on the corner of Maple and Sligo Creek, Geneva, actually.
Hilltop.
Hilltop, right, and Geneva comes down into it. It is zoned R30, which is a lower density. They are garden-style apartments, and the new zoning proposed is a CRT. It's similar to the rest of Maple Avenue. I don't know what council's position on that is, but it's something you might want to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so it is after nine o'clock. So, I am, I, for those, that I'm going to do one more round of questions, all right? You got one on this side, one on that side, one on the, on the computer, all right? Now, if you, if we're not able to get to you, can we hold up those handy-dandy index cards? We have handy-dandy index cards. And you are free to write your questions on an index card, and your questions will be used, again, to help inform future FAQs, as well as the information that we, we make available online.
Put your ward number?
Yep. And if you can just make sure that you put your ward number, so the respective council member will also know what your question is. All right, so we're going to go ahead and go to the side.
Karen Elrich.
I'm sorry, I know you were first, but we got you.
Karen Elrich, Ward Five. My question is about the market rate rental, nine units, properties with 485 homes on it. So these are currently under rent control, right? And if we give them the ability to be zoned up to 15 floors, is it, I think, in the, down that area? What stops, what happens to these 405 homes if a developer comes in and says, I'll buy that from you, and I'm going to put in 15 stories, and you're going to have to move out? And we have 485 units, that, that possibly could happen. Yeah, it's a possibility, but it could happen. And if that does, what happens to these folks? I mean, I'm, I'm asking this out of sincerity, of worrying about having 405 homes, 485 homes displaced, with probably not being able to even go back into those homes, because they will be built at a higher level of rental when they come back up for, for rent. And they will be exempt from rent control for five years. And that's one of my major concerns when I look at, I like the idea that I found out that deed-restricted rentals, that they're probably okay, but we still have the condominiums, the five properties there, and we have nine buildings, and we should be looking at those to see if that's actually a worry. Maybe I'm being, you know, overly worried. I don't think I am. I have just seen what has happened with developers throughout the county of Montgomery County, and they may, they're there to make money. That's their job. And I don't want that done to five, these 485 homes that make this place the place I moved into, which is diverse. Thank you.
So, Ira, if we can restate what was discussed earlier in terms of the fact that, one, the market rate rents here in the city are lower, and if we can also talk about our other mechanisms that we've been trying to beef up in the city, including our first right of refusal?
Sure, and real quick, I apologize, I realize my video has been off, I don't even know if you can see me anyway, but, sure, yeah, so I think, you know, I can't speak, obviously, to what any sort of property owner or developer might do. Certainly, it is a property owner's right if they build a new unit with our current existing rent stabilization law to charge whatever rent they'd like for those first five years. You know, what I You know, what I just will say kind of is that traditionally, that would be kind of based on what the market is, right? A developer or property owner would look at what existing rents in the area are and probably base their rents based on that to some degree, because they want to ensure they have tenants. So you know, one of the kind of hidden protections we do have is that rent stabilization has done a really great job of keeping our quote-unquote "market rate" rent really, really low, really, really low compared to the rest of both the county and the metro region. So again, you know, I think it's a valid question. I can't promise or guarantee what a developer would do and what rents they would decide to charge for those five years, but you know, one of the great protections we do have kind of on the market side is that we have been able to keep rents really low about, I don't want to misspeak, because I know it's in the blog post, but I believe almost like $500 median rent lower than the county and the DMV region, which is a pretty substantial number. So I'll point out that, and then the other piece, Mayor, that you mentioned is our Tenant Opportunity Purchase Law. So when a property does go for sale, a multi-unit property goes for sale, and that property has a signed sale contract, that property has to be offered first to the tenants and a tenant association, then to the city, then to the county, all of us who could take action and purchase that property at that accepted purchase price. So it is a protection that exists. One of the things that we as staff are working on are really trying to provide some of the wraparound resources to make that an actionable process for tenants and tenant associations, including funding to provide additional technical assistance, so that when an opportunity arises, tenants, tenant associations are prepared to take action, as well as potentially some gap financing to help with those acquisition costs if tenants are interested in, when their tenant opportunity purchase comes up, taking advantage of that. And we did actually see within the plan area here, a successful example of that at 112 Lee Avenue, where tenants were able to acquire a property that had gone for sale and actually have converted that property to what's called a limited equity cooperative. So each resident owns a portion of the cooperative, but they're also still tenants. It's a really cool model that eases the burden on individual renters and makes it an achievable process, and we were really excited to help out with that, not just with our laws, but also with our funding as well.
Okay, next question.
Hi, I'm Carl Elefante, Ward 3. I just wanted to say, you know, for a person with a hammer, all problems look like nails. And let's recognize that what this Minor Master Plan Amendment is, is this upzoning. It's a substantial upzoning of all the properties that we're talking about. Increased density means increased value to the property. Increased value to the property is pressure to redevelop that property. It's basically sowing the seeds of demolishing the buildings on Maple Avenue. That is how zoning works. And I think if that's not our goal, then we really need to take a holistic approach to what are we doing with this, with this Minor Master Plan Amendment? That's the tool that we're putting into the hands of the county. And I would just add one more comment about holistically, and that is, please look at climate change holistically. Look at what the, what the climate impact would be on embodied energy, avoided embodied energy, by keeping those buildings versus tearing those buildings down. And it's a much more holistic view than is even contemplated in this Minor Master Plan Amendment.
Thank you. All right. So did we, no, it wasn't. Did we, did we get the last three?
And it's the last, the last cycle for online. So I'm going to rattle off three questions that are all sort of quick. Question one, at this point in the process, can you speak to how decisions will be made about future commercial development on the Washington Adventist Hospital Center? Two, a previous question mentioned stormwater management on Sligo Creek side of Adventist Campus. Could you comment on stormwater management on the Greenwood side of the planning area? Specifically, will the plan make any effort to improve upon the currently suboptimal stormwater management for the area? And three, what ensures the Minor Master Plan Amendment's amenities? Example, the Green Promenade get built and not only the commercial structures?
Great. Okay, so do you want to take the wah question?
Sure. So the, if the Minor Master Plan is passed in some form and the zoning on the Washington Adventist Hospital campus is changed, then the couple of things happen. One, the requirement in the plan is that whatever development happens there comes through as one whole piece for the entire property rather than piecemeal. And it's important to consider it that way, because there are aggregate benefits and impacts rather than smaller parcels. The process looks different than that. If the plan doesn't go through, then the remaining, the continuing zoning for that property is single-family homes. And so the most likely, if it's to be developed, would come through for a plan of something like 130 single-family homes. I don't know what those would look like or what price point those would be. The process for the decision-making at each, any, again, the requirement that gives us a role here is that any property that abuts, or any CR-zoned property that abuts or confronts across the street or next to or behind residential-zoned property has to go through a site plan review, which means that it goes through the planning board, which means the city council has a role and can pass a resolution of support, of support with conditions, or of disapproval of a site plan. And the planning board, again, would have to overrule that with a supermajority. So there, that's a protection that's built in for the CR zoning, whether or not they need any special exceptions, whether they're doing subdivision to combined parcels or split parcels. You can't build across different parcel boundary lines in Montgomery County, so they would have to merge into one. All of those things might happen and might not happen, and would also trigger development review, but the piece of CR zoning abutting residential means almost every property that would be zoned CR in the proposal would come through a site plan just because of that reason. And that gives the city another role in the process.
Okay. And I think there was, there was a couple of other questions around stormwater with the, I think, the Green Promenade and...
So the stormwater that exists now on most of these older-built environments, I think it's probably the Washington Adventist University Campus that would have the biggest impact on Greenwood, wasn't part of those initial developments. And so any new development is, again, required to have stormwater management as part of the development. That's city law, which takes precedent. It also happens to be state law, it's echoed there. And so development would have to address those runoff issues that are problematic for people. And the third question about what ensures, I'm sorry, I didn't write the name.
What ensures that the amenities, such as the Green Promenade proposed in the plan, would get built and not only the commercial structures?
That's a harder question. I think some of it would, is related to a level of detail we may not know all about. There are easements on properties on Maple, utility easements, that would enable certain kinds of development that the city could take the lead on. We also have plans in the works in development now for the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project, and so as that dovetails, there may be opportunities for that to happen. But the public space issues would be at the city's initiative and Montgomery Parks, I mean, MNC PPC's initiative for Sligo Creek and the Stream Valley Park.
Okay.
Does that answer it?
I think that answers the question. Yeah, it was, that was a quadruple. So again, I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. We, we had already accepted our last round of questions, and in complete fairness for people who took index cards to write down their questions, again, I want to encourage people who have not had a chance to speak tonight to please write your question on an index card. The index cards and the information, as long, as well as your ward, the information that you provide will, will definitely be used by staff to help inform future FAQs. Information will be coming to the council members so that we can continue to provide opportunities for discussions with you all. And so again, I want to thank you all for coming out tonight and sharing your thoughts and asking questions. Again, the next round of public, the public testimony is on September the 14th, and council will be discussing this matter when we return from recess in September, September the 6th. So again, thank you all so much. Thank you to my colleagues as well as our HCD staff for meeting with us tonight. Everyone, have a great evening.